Thank you, Madam Clerk. City assailant, October 12, 2023. A regular meeting of the City Council was held in person on Thursday, October 12, 2023, at 7:00 p.m., starting at 7:30 p.m., for the purposes of transacting any and all business. Notice of this meeting was posted on October 10, 2023, at 1:04 p.m. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV and Zoom unless technological issues interrupt the transmission. Counselors absent, none. Council President Stott presided. Counselor Cohen moved to dispense with the reading of the record of the previous meeting. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. I now request that everyone please rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor McCarthy.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first portion of our agenda this evening is public comment. Public comment, you do need to sign up for 30 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. We have two methods to sign up, either an online link that's posted in the agenda, or you can sign up via a roster in the City Clerk's office no later than 6:30 p.m. on the date of the meeting. Tonight, we have four members signed up. We do have a limit of three minutes each for each... Oh, there are more, I'm sorry. Seven? Yes, I do. Okay, so tonight, we have seven members signed up, so we will need to implement a two-minute limit for each speaker. I will call those in order first in person, and then those that are joining us remotely in order in which they signed up. When I call your name, please make your way to the podium in the chambers, speak directly into the mic so we can hear you, and if you would like to state your name and address for the record, you may do so. The first name I'm going to call is Michael Stronberg, and then Stockberg. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. Mike Stockbridge, I live on Chestnut Street, and I was just... I was just coming here tonight to support the parking, resident parking, not for the parking bit, well, the parking ban that's been enforced there for several years, the temporary parking ban that's for October, yes, thank you very much. So I was just coming up to support that and ask you all to support that because it's worked for a number of years. As we all know, the traffic has been an issue, but I'm just asking you to support that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, Zhongmei Vincenzo of... Yes, you just may make your way to the podium. If you'd like to include your name and address for the record, please state that into the microphone, and then you may start your public comment.
My name is Zhongmei Vincenzo. I'm at 11 Church Street, Unit 705. On September 5, 2023, at 9:00 p.m., I went for a walk outside my home. I was walking down the Essex Street pedestrian mall past the Hotel Salem when a costumed street performer dressed in a full Michael Myers costume that I recognized to have a reputation for being aggressive and menacing towards tourists and locals ran out at me from the alley and threatened me with a homemade metal kitchen knife. I know that it was metal because he, as he was coming towards me, he scraped his knife down the arm of his coveralls so that I could hear that it was metal. He wanted me to know that he was armed and dangerous. I tried to take a step away, but he continued to advance, closing the physical gap between us. In that moment, my fight-or-flight instinct kicked in, and I figured that if I was going to die that night, I would die fighting. My heart rate skyrocketed, and I was breathing fast and was coming fast and ragged. I was practically heaving and snarling like an animal. I could feel my body bristle, and I was absolutely prepared to die fighting this masked assailant. I could not turn my back, as he had already indicated that he intended to pursue me if I ran. I had to face this man, so I met him face to face, inches from his eyes, and held my ground, all the while he would not relent his intimidation, gesturing to his back pocket, suggesting that he had another concealed weapon. He was a predator, I was his prey, and I could not back down. I could not afford to show him fear. This lasted for a total of 15 uninterrupted minutes, and for every one of them, I believed that I was staring my murderer in the eyes. When I made a police report, I was told that because he was a street performer, I had to wait until he approached me again before they could make an attempt to ID him. Because the City of Salem decided to do away with the registry for street performers, I have no way of identifying my masked assailant. He's still out there somewhere, and he knows my face, but because he was masked and the city did away with the registry, I have no way of knowing his. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Gunner.
My name is Gunner Vincenzo, and I also live at 11 Church Street, and I'm here to say that I think it is completely unreasonable that we have done away with the Performers' Registry, and I wish that you would all reconsider reinstating it. As you heard from my wife Zhongmei, we as a family are now less safe because we will never be able to identify the maniac who held her at knife point for 15 minutes. Beyond our own issue, this demonstrates a clear flaw in how the city relates to its public performances during this Halloween happening time. Without rude registering, if a performer happens to be caught at just the right moment and perhaps trespass for violating their current rules and regulations, all they need to do is simply put on a different mask and come back the next day. How can you tell? How could you tell that they were the same person unless you had a reason to collect their ID? I understand that there are concerns about First Amendment-protected activities and the things that you can do under the First Amendment, but I also want to remind you of a number of things that are First Amendment activities that we do have to give our names for. When I purchased property, my name went to the assessor's office. When I registered to vote, my name was taken by the clerk. When I go to the ballot box, my name is given at the table. And when I speak here to you tonight, I had to provide my name. In none of those instances did me having to give over my name restrict my ability to exercise my First Amendment. It does not harm anybody to ask for people's names when they're dressed up as they are in the streets. And the last thing is that we don't have to do any of that. I don't have to give you a name if I'm going to speak to you and talk to you about this issue, but if I wanted to put on a mask, don a costume, and grab a weapon and menace you on the street, that you don't think I need, you don't need my name for. And that is just outside of the realm of responsibility. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Please, next up, we have, I think that's Felipe? Okay, there's a stamp over it, sorry.
Apologies for my bad handwriting. Counsel President Stott, Felipe Zambellini, 19 Linden Street. I'm really excited now with this comment about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board that we're going to be very close to a full body. We haven't been a full body in a while. You have before you today, I think, believe is your first item on the agenda, consideration of two really great volunteers to this board, Jason Leese and Liza Ruana Lucy. Liza is a great friend of mine, she was a former high school classmate of mine, ran track and field with me way back in the day, and we both found ourselves here in Salem finding an amazing affordable community. Her partner is a public servant in our city, in our libraries, and she's an amazing person that I couldn't be happier to have nominated to be part of this board, who found affordability again in our community and wants to make sure that remains the case for others. Jason brings really unique skill sets to the board that's of much different perspective than mine as a housing advocate, much different perspective from others who have experienced all the different things that they've experienced in life, but I had a really great conversation with him in trying to understand his thinking process, and I think he would be a great member to add on to the thinking process that we have on the board. And I'm really excited for the possibility that we may not have issues with quorum moving forward after the appointment of these two folks and potentially others in the board as we may still have one more vacancy to be filled. So I'm just here in speaking in support of theirs, and also you're going to be considering a renomination, of course, of Linda Fairbanks Atkins and Chris Malmstrom, who have been amazing members on this board as well, and I just want to hope that, I know you all will vote in their favor because you all know they're great people who are doing great work in the city, but I just needed to come up and speak on their behalf and just highlight and shine these folks to you all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up, we have those that have signed up online. Oh, first, we have Dennis.
Hi, Dennis Schaefer, 11 Glover Street. Dear City Council, the tenants of Artist's Row and surrounding community are experiencing unsafe conditions surrounding the public restrooms on Artist's Row. I would like to ask that we immediately increase funding to DPS for increased cleaning and permanent porter services of the bathrooms on Artist's Row. If restrooms are to be open from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., then we must have a bathroom attendant at those times. City staff has advised that this can be done by increasing funding to DPS for increased cleaning and round-the-clock porter services. For years, these restrooms have housed many illegal, unsanctioned, and unsafe activities having nothing to do with normal use of a restroom. These include heavy drug use, shelter, people sleeping them overnight, and sexual intercourse. On Sunday, September 10, multiple people were witnessed by our business and tourists occupying the front area of the bathrooms, smoking crack, and then going to the stalls to have sexual intercourse between breaks from smoking. This happened in broad daylight in the afternoon. The police were called multiple times, were unable to come for over an hour, and after they came by, the people continued to stay in the restroom area. This is unfortunately one of many incidents that have been called into the police in the past weeks. I personally have reported when the bathrooms are in condition which I feel they should not stay open. I do not feel that bathrooms should remain open when very dirty and not supplied with toilet paper and soap. The city's protocol for addressing these issues is see, click, fix. DPS doesn't have the resources to address these issues. For example, we have a few of these tickets outstanding and open since July. These tickets include, issues include soap dispenser torn off the wall, soap dispensers constantly empty, excrement on the bathroom wall, and vomit in the sink. Since October 1, there was supposed to be a porter working, but nobody showed up to the porter, the restrooms on October 1. Finally, a teenager came to porter the restrooms on Thursday, the 5th, and the restroom had a porter for a few hours each day, Thursday through Sunday. There is unfortunately an unhoused population congregating around the bathrooms, ready to make it their home as soon as the porters leave. It is currently a crisis, with my shopkeepers calling in reports multiple times every hour this evening.
I'm sorry you interrupted, your time is up. Thank you for your comments, though. Next up, we have...
I was unaware of the sign-up requirement.
Okay, so our sign-up, I will say our sign-up requirement is the same as it has been for a very long time. It's 30 minutes before the meeting. If you did not make this one, you can definitely make the next one. I'm still going to continue to go through.
But regarding an issue that you have...
Okay, I'm sorry that we did not get the sign-up. We have two more than we have, we're actually coming up on our 15-minute limitation of public comments. So next up, we have Christine Mador, and then finally, we will have Andrew Lippman.
Thank you, Madam President. Christine Mador, 20 Federal Street, Unit 8. I was here originally to speak in support of amending the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board membership, but I decided to table that for later and speak in support for the tie agreement for 38 Norman Street. And being here at the ANF committee meeting and listening to the line of questioning, I felt very concerned about the lack of knowledge and familiarity with this tie agreement as well as H-DIP from this body, knowing that this program, and Salem in particular, has been beneficiaries of this program for several years, that I am still hearing facts from city councilors putting out there very irresponsibly about taxes not being paid. I heard questions about what the public benefit was for 65 Washington Street, and that is very concerning to me because I feel directly the public benefit of that building because I live next door to it. I have at least 60 new neighbors, many of which moved from their homes in Salem to downsize this building. I know the families who live in the deed-restricted affordable units very closely, and the public benefit beyond my own benefit is that instead of a vacant building, a contaminated building that is sitting there not generating any tax revenue, is now creating new growth for the city, new revenue that is going to benefit everyone in the city for more services, for more other things that this city requires to run on. So when you talk about public benefit, this is what you see at budget season every year. The calculus is there, so to hear that there is no public benefit, or you're questioning the public benefit, coming from a tie agreement from H-DIP is very concerning, and I urge you, as city councilors who constantly talk about the need for affordable housing and the urgency to address affordable housing, that you need to be doing everything in your power to be creating housing units, whether market rate, deed-restricted, affordable, any new housing will benefit any family that needs a home. So thank you, and please pass the tie agreement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Andrew.
Hi, I'm Andrew Lippman. I live at 28 Chestnut Street, and I'm also the president of Chestnut Street Associates. I'm speaking in support of the motion that's going to come up later, the first on your list of ordinances, in support of putting back the green resident-only temporary parking stickers for the month of October. I want to just make a couple of points. The first is that I recently read Section 75 of the New York Parking Ordinance, 75A, and Section 75A lists approximately 83 streets that get those green signs during the month of October, and Chestnut Street, or Upper Chestnut Street, was conspicuously omitted from that list. All of the other streets surrounding us are included on that list. That seems to be an annual automatic process, and the simple, obvious solution, rather than have these yearly procedures come before you, would be to simply add us to that list, which would solve a lot of problems. Second, we currently have signs for resident parking with a two-hour exception that visitors are allowed to stay there. I think it's important for you to understand that that's not a restriction, rather it's an invitation, as opposed to just having resident parking only on the street. Rather, we open it for two hours for visitors who go to the museums, who go to the events, and who simply enjoy the neighborhood, and we certainly want to continue that. But that privilege is abused during the month of October, when the streets are filled up with visitors and therefore blocking people from going to the museums, the libraries, and the churches. So we want the green signs in order to prevent that further abuse from going. And finally, I'd like to note that on Chestnut Street, the Phillips Museum and Hamilton Hall have not objected to the presence of the green signs, so I urge you to simply restore them. They were actually up for several days, then were taken down. Please put them back. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. That's all correct, Madam Clerk? Okay. Moving on to hearings.
We've held from the last meeting National Grid's order in Verizon to install one jointly-owned pole on Boston at Fowler Street.
Those speaking in favor, please make your way to the podium, or if you're joining us online, please use the raise hand function.
Sabida Mahaber Sheehy, representing National Grid, 44 River Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. I'm here tonight to withdraw that petition.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Any hands from the Zoom world or in council chambers? Any comments from the councilors? Counselor Marcelo.
Thank you, President Stott. I just want to give a little bit of background. The location that was chosen is a tricky location, and the engineering department wasn't comfortable with the place that was selected. It's between two lots on Boston Street where the laundromat is, and there's a sign that divides the two plots of land, which is a parking lot, and so the fear was that if, with the sign located where it is in the middle of the parking lot, and then a pole in front of that on the sidewalk, that it would obstruct the vision of cars coming in and out of the lot, and also may be an issue for fire trucks leaving the lot also. And then we also have this big project on Boston Street coming soon, and so there was a real concern that placing the pole there was going to be a problem for that project. So the request was that they go back and maybe find a better location, which is why they've chosen to withdraw.
Thank you for that explanation and your diligence, as always. Do we need to close the public hearing still? No? Okay, petition has been withdrawn. Appointments and reappointments.
We've held from the last meeting the mayor's appointments of the following with terms to expire. Christopher Dunn to the redevelopment authority, April 13, 2027. Jason Leese, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, January 17, 2024. And Lisa Lucy, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, May 26, 2024.
Counselor Hepworth.
Thank you, President Stott. I move for confirmation by roll call vote.
Counselor Hepworth moves for confirmation by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you, President Stott. Just want to thank Mr. Dunn for his willingness to serve here, and Mr. Leese and Ms. Ruana Lucy, I think Felipe gave a great introduction of both them. Want to thank them for their willingness to serve as well.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Stott. I wanted to echo what Mrs. Zambellini said. I was lucky enough to talk to Jason and Liza and agree that they will really bring new and fresh perspectives to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, and as former Counsel Mador said, we really need to be as productive as possible, or the board does, and so I'm very excited for my last couple of meetings on the board to work with them.
Thank you. Madam City, any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Watsonfeld.
Yes.
Counsel Verella.
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski.
Yes.
Counsel Marcelo.
Yes.
Counsel Merkel.
Yes.
Counsel McLean.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez.
Yes.
Counsel Cohen.
Yes.
And Counsel Stott.
Yes. On the mayor's appointment of Christopher Dunn to the redevelopment authority, Jason Leese to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and Liza Riana Lucy to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, 11 members voting, 11 in the affirmative, matter carries. Counselor Hepworth.
Thank you, President Stott. I'd like to suspend the rule, move to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Leese and Ms. Ruana Lucy to speak if they choose. Hi, everyone. For those who I've met, Jason Leese, I live at 33 Williams Street. I just want to thank the mayor, the planning department, City Council, those especially who kind of vetted me throughout this process, and the folks who are already on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. I was already pretty motivated by this opportunity, simply because, of course, affordable housing is something that we all know is a critical issue for our city. What's ironic about what I'm about to say next is, what really motivated me is throughout the vetting process, and the irony here is because of the discussions we've been having about the makeup of the board, is I wasn't vetted for, you know, specific opinions about how I'd move something forward. Where I was vetted was really my skill set, and would it be additive to the board, or would it be more of the same? So I don't want to put words in people's mouths, but for those of you who maybe have my resume in front of you, I have a pretty deep background in corporate governance and funding strategy, which, as you can probably imagine, would be important for a group like this. So I have a great deal to learn, I'm already learning a great deal, and I look forward to serving on the board and working with many of you. Thanks.
Thank you.
How fair is it, though?
Thank you. Order, we do not allow that in chambers, you need to be, order, order.
Order. Point of order.
Has anybody else, is Liza rose her hand? No? Okay. Order in the court, please, we, order in the court. A little levity, everyone, I got used with my gavel. We are only speaking, that is a different matter, these are appointments that were scheduled to be here this evening. I will call to ask to have you removed if you continue the interruptions, so please, I would like everyone to continue to participate in the meeting this evening. Moving on, we have further appointments and reappointments.
We've held from the last meeting the mayor's reappointment of Gabriel Jaeger to the Scholarship and Education Committee with a term to expire September 10, 2026.
Counsel Marcelo.
Thank you, President. I move for confirmation by roll call vote.
Counsel Marcelo moves for confirmation by roll call vote, under discussion.
Just thank you very much to Gabriel for volunteering to be a part of this board.
Any further discussion? Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, President Stott and Counsel Marcelo. I've gotten to know Gabriel, he's one of the leaders of the CTE department at the high school. He teaches the IT, and he also runs all their events, and as many of you know, this has become really a great thing for all of Salem to be proud of.
Thank you. Any further discussion? On the mayor's reappointment of Gabriel Jaeger to the Scholarship and Education Committee with a term to expire September 10, 2026, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Watsonfeld.
Yes.
Counsel Verella.
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski.
Yes.
Counsel Marcelo.
Yes.
Counsel Merkel.
Yes.
Counsel McLean.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Hepworth.
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez.
Yes.
Counsel Cohen.
Yes.
And Counsel Stott.
Yes. On the mayor's reappointment of Gabriel Jaeger to the Scholarship and Education Committee, 11 members voting, 11 in the affirmative, matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments.
The mayor's...
Yeah, no, further appointments and reappointments.
The mayor's appointment of William Nguyen to the Sustainability, Energy, and Resiliency Committee with a term to expire October 26, 2026.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, President. I move that it be held under the rules.
Counsel McCarthy moves that this be held under the rules. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter is held. Further appointments and reappointments.
With the mayor's reappointment of Christopher Malmstrom and Linda Fairbanks Atkins to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board with a term to expire October 26, 2025.
Counsel Hepworth.
Thank you, President. I move these be held under the rules.
Counsel Hepworth moves that these be held under the rules. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On the matter that the reappointments be held under the rules, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Communications from the mayor.
We've ordered that the sum of $51,103.80 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account to expend it for contractual buybacks for the person named below, Fire Department personnel.
Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Counsel President. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counsel McLean moves for suspension of the rules, seeing no objection. Counsel McLean.
Thank you. I further move for adoption.
Counsel McLean moves for adoption, under discussion.
Simply with gratitude, a former employee of our fire department going through one of our almost weekly contractual buybacks, we just thank them for the good and dangerous work that they've done as they move along.
Any further discussion? On Counsel McLean, motion that the sum of $51,103.80 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account be expended for the retirement, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We've ordered to accept the donation of $3,212.86 from Salem Harbor Station. The donation is to be deposited into the Parks and Rec Donation Fund for the annual Derby Street Mile Road Race.
Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Counsel President. I move for adoption.
Counsel McLean moves for adoption, under discussion.
With thanks to Salem Harbor Station.
Any further discussion? Counsel McCarthy.
I too want to rise and thank Salem Harbor Station for their generous donation, and I want to thank the volunteers who came out and volunteered for the road race to help run the road race, and I want to thank all the participants, and I always encourage anyone who's never been down to see the Derby Street Mile, just to show up once to see the end, and when you see all the younger children running with their extended families, and all of a sudden, when they're running their last 100 yards from the friendship right to the end, it's like it's chariots of fire, and they're running their own personal, you know, race, and it's a great thing to witness, and it's great. know, race and it's a great thing to witness and it's a great family fun event. And I just encourage and I want to thank Salem Harbor Station for the generous donation to allow this race to happen and also to allow the funding so that the park and rec can program more things for our children. So I want to thank them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? On Counsel McLean's motion for adoption to accept the donation of $3,212.86 from Salem Harbor Station, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Mayor's informational page, we have none. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Counsel Watsonfeld?
Thank you, President Stott. Ordered that the streets set forth below with limited resident permanent permit parking shall be designated as temporary resident permit parking only. Streets from October 1 to November 1, 2023 during the hours of 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Monday through Friday and 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Saturday through Sunday. Temporary resident permit parking only streets. Number one, Chestnut Street from Cambridge Street to Flint Street. And I move that this be adopted.
Counsel Watsonfeld moves for adoption. Under discussion?
Thank you, President. As you heard from a couple of the residents earlier tonight, this is something that has been instilled and enacted previously multiple times and it, you know, they're, I'm here tonight to ask that we do it again. If there are questions, I'd be happy to speak to that for the fellow counselors present, but there, as everyone knows, you know, resident parking and October parking particularly is really helpful to our residents who don't have additional enforceable, easy to enforce restrictions. So this is just one more protection for a street, which is amongst a number of other streets that already have this in the area. Thank you.
Any further discussion? On Counsel Watsonfeld's motion that the streets set forth below with limited resident parking shall be designated as temporary resident parking only on streets from, or only from October 1st to November 1st, 2023 during the hours of 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Monday through Friday and 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Saturday through Sunday for Chestnut Street from Cambridge Street to Flint Street. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Counsel Watsonfeld?
Thank you, President Stott. In the year 2023, an ordinance relative to store fortune telling licenses, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salem as follows. Section 1, Chapter 14, Division 2, Section 14 to 73. Licensing board authorized to license is hereby amended by deleting subsection B in its entirety and replacing it with the following. Oh, come on. It's so short. And I move that this be adopted for first passage.
Counsel Watsonfeld moves for adoption for first passage. Under discussion?
Thank you, President Stott. This was brought to me by a store owner who has such fortune telling licenses in place. It was brought to my attention that there is, as the ordinance outlines, a maximum of five that can be on the property at any one time, but that there was also previously a maximum of five licenses per store. And so what this does basically is enable there to be a sort of backlog of vetted hired professionals that a store owner could call upon or schedule or pull from. So we are not increasing the number of practicing licenses in the space physically at any one time, but we are enabling companies to also, to hire more, right? And so for me, this equates in my mind, the sort of metaphor I always use is that of any other service, right? Like if you think about your hair salon, for example, or your barber, there may only be three chairs, but there may be seven that are hired by that person that comes in, gets scheduled. And part of the benefit of that to the store owner is that they can then also vet these people. They meet their standards, right? They have the style, the brand, the whatever it is that they're looking for. So this is very similar. When I spoke to the city solicitor about this and why the original maximum was set, she went back through the minutes and her notes and she actually couldn't remember why, why it was done or what the council was thinking of at that time. And she had no objection. I don't want to speak on her behalf, but in our conversation, it was expressed to me she had no objection to increasing the number of licenses. The other edit to this, for those of you who have looked at the red line, is that this ordinance is now being updated to match the state hiring practices of W-2 employees as opposed to I-9 contractors. So that was a change that was rolled out. As I understand it, it was expected everyone kind of should be doing that anyways, but our ordinance didn't require it. So when we decided to update the ordinance with the number of licenses, our city solicitor decided to also include that assumptive language that our local people would be following state law. Thank you.
Thank you. Under discussion? Who else was researching fortune teller licenses going? Hashtag Counsel in Salem. Counsel Hapworth?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to appreciate that we had creepy clowns on the agenda last week and fortune telling on the agenda this week, so we're staying on brand as a city council.
Counsel Watsonfeld?
Thanks. And you know, I just want to say, because it's funny and it is true and it is unique to us, although there are, you know, I always look at New Orleans. I always say Salem's a miniature New Orleans. But I do want to acknowledge that these are services that people feel really strongly about providing and being really good at. And I think it's important and wonderful that we are tonight honoring that service that they provide, that business that they run, the same way we do every other service in Salem. And so I appreciate this support, or at least assumptive support based on the lack of questions here tonight. Thanks.
Thanks. Any further discussion? On Counsel Watsonfeld's motion for first adoption to edits for the ordinance relative to story, to store fortune teller licenses? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, President Stott. Ordered that the November and December meetings be held on November 16th, 2023 and December 7th, 2023.
Counsel McCarthy moves for adoption. Under discussion?
Thank you. Move for adoption and the city clerk has gone through the dates as she always does every year and we have that one meeting in November after the election and before Thanksgiving. And so she's picked the appropriate date. And for the month of December, I'm assuming that we talked to finance and that's the date that works with finance and that's when we're going to set the tax rate. So that will work out and that's traditional that we have one in each of those months. So I want to thank the clerk for her due diligence and I move for adoption.
Any further discussion? On Counsel McCarthy's motion that the November and December meetings be held on November 16th, 2023 and December 7th, 2023? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Counsel Varela?
Thank you, President Stott. Ordered that the Public Health and Safety Environment Committee discuss the following ordinance amended to be adding the new section 31 to chapter 24 of offenses of miscellaneous provisions. No one shall, no one per move we wave.
Thank you. Thank you.
Your motion?
My motion would be moved to adopt this, putting this in the Public Health, Safety, Environment Committee.
Counsel Varela moves for adoption. Under discussion?
I'm sorry, and I would like to add, also adding committee of the whole as well.
That's it?
Co-posted.
Thank you. Under discussion?
Thank you, President Stott. So a little background, myself and Counselor Stott talked about this about two years ago before I was a city counselor with Salem Sound Coast Watch and Barbara Warren. I do believe that when it comes to any balloon that is fixed with a gas, there is an issue. We are a seacoast town. We would be one of, I believe, five now if we did adopt this. There is an issue with balloons, releasing of balloons that do affect our coastlines. And I also wanted to add that there is a bill in the State House right now from Rep. Peak of Province Town with the same issue as well. So I really believe going forward, you know, for this committee meeting, we're going to kind of clean up the language and address our issue as a seacoast community. Thank you.
Under discussion? Counsel Watsonfeld?
Thank you, President Stott. This will be fast. I just have to say that as a student of the Phoenix School in like 1986, I first learned that helium balloons can be lodged in the throat of compact whales and cause them to suffocate. And the fact that it is now 2023 and this, these sorts of conversations are only kind of just now starting is really great. And I want to thank Counsel Varela for bringing it forward, Counselor Stott for your work on it. I look forward to the conversation. Thanks, a member of the committee. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Counsel Merkel?
Thank you, President Stott. I just want to also agree with Counsel Watsonfeld. I'm happy to see this come in. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Counsel President. I'm happy to see this come forward too. I realize that for some, this may seem a little silly on its face if they're not familiar with some sort of the impacts of this, but I am a little bit familiar with the impact of balloon waste environmentally. And also, I will just say, as a person who works in the downtown area, we have all balloons that enter our front doors go directly into the trash. It's actually a real problem within our buildings as well. It's terrible when they get released and they're full of helium and you can't get them down. They're terrible when they get left around. They create trash. They gum things up. They get into machine. It's amazing the number of places that balloons go. So I'm actually really happy to see this.
Any further discussion? On Counsel Varela's motion that the Public Health, Safety, and Environment Committee co-posted with committee of the whole, made to discuss an ordinance to amend offenses of miscellaneous provisions related to helium filled balloons? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Counsel Marcelo?
Thank you, President. And city council, October 12th, 2023, ordered that these conditions are placed on the utility company's grant of locations. Conditions, no construction allowed until required permits are obtained. Complete application for the street opening and trench permit must be submitted at least seven days prior to proposed start of work date. Refer to street opening rules and regulations for complete requirements to the city engineers' information for drain layers page. Requirements include all the, that all structures installed within the public way, public right of way shall be H2O rated and that sidewalks must be replaced in kind. And I move for adoption.
Counsel Marcelo moves for adoption. Under discussion?
Thank you, President. So this is just my next step apparently in all of these utility poles, which is crazy. Never in a million years thought this would be my thing, but the, we've been getting input from the engineering department and so they've, they've been sending back conditions that are a little bit different than what our city clerks have been putting on the applications. And so by putting this through as an order, they can change the stickers that they put on that are preprinted with these specific conditions. It saves them time. It was going to save the engineering department time by just saying, you know, standard conditions at this point and then specifying anything else that's specific to that particular conduit or utility pole.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Varela?
Thank you, President Stott. Just one question. I'm assuming that when it comes to emergency work that this would not apply to this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? On Counsel Marcelo's motion for adoption that the following conditions be placed on the utilities company's grant of locations? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Counsel Marcelo?
Thank you, President Stott. In the year 2023, an ordinance relative to traffic, chapter 42, section 50B, handicap zones, limited time, be it or drained by the city council of the city of Salem as follows. Section 1, section 50B, handicap zones, limited time, shall be amended by adding the following. Margin Street, beginning four feet north of the driveway of 80 Margin Street, running in northly direction for 20 feet. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. And I move for adoption for first passage.
Counsel Marcelo moves for adoption for first passage. Under discussion?
This is an elderly woman who reached out to me to ask for handicapped, handicap spot and I ran this by Lieutenant Tucker who wrote all of it up. So thank you.
Any further discussion? On Counsel Marcelo's motion for first passage, that the ordinance relative to traffic, chapter 42, section 50B, handicap zones, amends to include an area on Margin Street? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Counsel Marcelo?
Thank you, President. In the year 2023, an ordinance relative to traffic, chapter 42, section 50B, handicap zones, limited time, be it ordained by the city of Salem, as follow, city council of the city of Salem as follows. Section 1, section 50B, handicap zones, limited time, shall be amended by repealing the following. Repeal Wilson Street in front of number 25 Wilson Street for a distance of 20 feet. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. And I move for adoption for first passage.
Counsel Marcelo moves for adoption for first passage. Under discussion?
This is just, was required by a previous resident, no longer needed.
Any further discussion? On Counsel Marcelo's motion for first passage for the ordinance relative to chapter 42, section 50B, handicap zones with the repeal of the location on Wilson Street? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Any further motions, orders? Moving on to committee reports? Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Counsel President. City of Salem, October 12th, 2023, I'm offering the following report for the committee on administration and finance, co-posted with the committee of the whole, to whom was referred the matter of an order to approve the certified project application for 38 Norman Street QOZV LLC and to authorize a tax increment exemption agreement, which has considered said matter and would recommend approval. And I move for acceptance of the report.
On acceptance of the report? All those in favor? On adoption of the recommendation? Under discussion?
Thank you, Counsel President. This meeting happened just before this one, or two meetings before this one. It's been quite a night. The committee had a lot of discussion that mainly centered on, first, on the comparable projects that have been approved for housing creation via HDIP and through alternative means in the case of the Lee Fort Terrace project. And we had some discussion around what made this project particularly worthy in terms of the clear public interest that would warrant a tax increment exemption. There was a vote to recommend approval. It was four to one. I will say that we heard some, we heard some concern this evening during our public comment period about a sense of conflict between the desire of this body to create housing for our city, which as always is a pressing need, not only for our city but for the entire state. And our questioning of both applicant and our city staff around what made this a particularly important project. And I will say that despite the urgent need to create housing, which I think everybody is invested in, I think those conversations are really important. I think we really are charged with doing our due diligence in terms of our constituents and in terms of the city, in terms of making sure that we are using money wisely. And I think we had a good discussion around it and I think everybody sort of got their questions answered. And so the recommendation is what the recommendation is.
Under discussion? Counsel Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott. I do want to express another benefit to the community. There was a lot of discussion about taxes, revenue. Our rental stock is diminishing really unfortunately at a fast rate. Condo conversions are, you know, especially smaller buildings, illegal Airbnbs, et cetera. And one of the things that we've talked about at the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board is the real lack in Salem of smaller units. These are one and two bedroom, which are not necessarily naturally affordable, but the developer is committed to rental units. And we just don't have enough rental units, especially at those size developments. So I'm in favor and I appreciate the discussion, but I think there's many benefits to this for the community.
Counselor Watson felt.
Thank you, President Stott. I have I have a few things to say on this, even though we just came out of committee meeting, and I want to just thank everyone's thank everyone for their for their patience on this. For starters, I take real umbrage with the comments of the former Ward Two City Councilor in that our questioning caused her concern about our lack of information or our understanding of the situation. This is a public house. We represent people. We are elected officials who represent people who are not always able to do their homework, who do not understand how to navigate some of these more complicated systems, who do not participate in these systems at a government level. Whether I walked into that meeting knowing the answers to those questions or not, this is the public forum where those questions get answered. End of story. I have absolutely no problem airing questions and concerns that are represent my represent my represent my constituents, whether or not I know the answer or not. This is a house of public discourse. Now, moving on. I think that it's important to acknowledge that in the other two instances or other three instances, we are talking about physical locations that were dilapidated, otherwise contaminated. And that there was they were blights, one of which was a city owned property, right? They were blights on our community. I think that there is a distinct visual aesthetic benefit, cleanliness benefit to those projects that in for for my part is part of the public benefit conversation, right? And I think public private partnerships are fair and good and important, and we absolutely need housing. I think raising concerns around a precedent being set, despite the fact that that this project is well within the rights of the state state law requirement, the state program, the Htip exists. This fits the bill. Like, you know, the owners own the property like I like I get it, but I think having a conversation around, you know, giving way to to private developers, for lack of a better word, right? Because that is how this is perceived by a number of our residents, requires review and conversation, and I think it's fair. I will say I want to echo Counselor Cohen's particular comment around the amount of rental units. Then the clincher for me in this scenario is the 99 year deed restriction on those two affordable units and the fact that these are rentable. And I had a private conversation with the developer prior to tonight's meeting that the intention is to maintain them as rentable units, which I think will be a direct benefit to the public. I think that that's an awkward space. I think it's a hard place to develop. Do I love the project? You know, honestly, Ryan, I'm not in love with the project. But I will say I think it is better than some alternatives. And you're you know, you're well within your rights and you've been working in good faith with the community. And I think I think that the community needs this this housing, so I'm going to support it tonight. But I I couldn't say yes again without having made those statements. Thank you.
Counselor Hepworth.
Thank you, President Stott. Yes, President Stott, sorry. I think I I walked into this meeting, I appreciate the Ward Two Counselors' comments. I think I walked into this meeting. I actually do like the project, Ryan. I walked in this 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 meeting, I think, as as a no wanting to be a yes. I think there's there absolutely, and I appreciate the comments around around the discussion that we had, because I think there are absolutely this is a place for that for that discussion to happen and for those questions to be asked, because I think that you know, we when you look at what we're doing with this and what money we're potentially giving up and what we could in the future and what precedent we're setting, I think these are these are important conversations that we should be having and we should be having publicly. And and this is a project that now we're tied to now. And when I look at a lot of development that happens around the city, you know, this there's only so much the City Council controls or has a hand in, but this 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 will now be something that will be in a very small way tied tied to our City Council. But when I look at, you know, I think that the the argument that was made, I believe by Amanda, about the the size of the development, I think resonates with me. It's it is. I think somebody mentioned this was a large corporation. This is not a large corporation that's building this. This is this is actually a a small scale developer that we should be that is the 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 deck is stacked against small developers all across the nation right now and even here locally in Salem. It's much easier for a large developer to come in with lawyers and and navigate through an overly complex zoning code and build something that's much larger and more ugly than we want to see here, because that's that's what our zoning code favors. It's much harder for a small developer to come in here, build 20 units of rental, even with only 20 only two affordable units, but that's that's something. To do that and do that with a proposal that I think is it fits fits into that neighborhood in size and scale. So I think that that's those are things that I think are clear public benefits that we can that we can stand behind, that I can stand behind and just appreciate everybody for the conversation here tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Stott. I also quickly want to say I appreciate the conversation that we've had tonight. The questions asked. I think it is important. We do our due diligence also. And also just looking at the overall picture that the goal is to create more housing, especially rental stocks, and all of it to include at least some percentage of affordability. And on top of that, we want to see a process where the neighbors are listened to. Designs are redone. They wanted a different size. If we want to check all those boxes, the projects still have to pencil out, or we will get no housing created. They have to, or they're going to, you know, they're going to switch gears. So I think I just wanted to make the point of being being realistic about that. We want to create housing and we want the community, the surrounding community, listened to with their input about that housing. We want affordability. So if we have a way to assist in making that happen, so we get more housing, I I'm happy to take part in assisting in that. Thank you.
Counselor Marcelo.
Thank you, President. I haven't made a comment on this yet in the committee or here. I'm in favor of this project. This is good housing that's coming to a really ugly piece of property. I live near there. I walk by this property all the time. It makes me crazy that it's being used to smush as many cars as possible into that space for a lot of money while they sell witch hats and other Halloween trinkets all year long. The entire side along Crombie Street is basically a driveway. There's cars going right over the sidewalk all the time. It's it's a mess. And so I look forward to a little bit more control on that corner as a walker. It's it's really a mess there. So, thank you. This is the minimal. This is the minimal decrease in in property taxes that we can give in order for them to get the funding they need to build this project. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, President Stott. I'm not going to make any comments about the project or what it looks like or what it looks like now. Alls I know is there was a public process and from watching it from afar, it seems like they did the due diligence and with with regards to scale and design. During the committee meeting, I didn't make any comments, but I was paying attention. And I just want to put it in perspective is it's always easy to second guess a decision that another council made years prior, because you you weren't sitting in the seat and you didn't know what the conditions were, both in the economy and what the what was going on at the city in the time with what was what people's perceptions were. When I started on the council, it was 10% affordability at 80%. And of course, we all know that that those numbers don't work. And through many, many years of discussions and comments and negotiations, you know, now we we look at 60% area mean income as being the number that we try to strive for. And we also look to, you know, 10% is a minimum. But we, you know, we love, we like projects that go with 20% and even beyond. So without without putting all of everything into context about how the decision was made, it's easy to say, well, I wouldn't have voted for that, or I would have voted for that. It's what was in front of the council at the time and what they what was in front of them and what they voted for. Right now, we have a project in front of us that is asking for the minimum. And it's asking for the minimum because that shows the state that the city is buying into the project so that they can then go after additional credits in funding at the state level to make their project more viable. And the the benefit is, as was stated, is rental units. And so I will be in favor of it, but I just want to put it into perspective a little bit is, you know, this body. I've been doing a little reflecting lately. I've had the pleasure of serving with almost 36 other councils over my tenure. And every single one of them had a different perspective and a different idea, or sometimes, and we all tried to come to consensus and ideas about what was what we needed to deal with in the moment. And in the moment, what's in front of us is a tool that was, you know, has been said is a tool in the toolbox. And it's a tool in the toolbox that we get asked to use occasionally. We don't get asked to use it all the time. But when we do get to use it, we we very diligent about how we act. And it's usually we look to strive to what the minimum would be for the city or what is best for the city at the time, realizing that in the end, we benefit from a project that is going to benefit the city. And then eventually we'll start paying dividends back to the city of what it should, but we give them a break to start in order to relatives to penciling out. And anyone who isn't in the contracting business or hasn't been a contractor, I can tell you from being a contractor is penciling out a project in today's day and age is very difficult. And we say it because, you know, I'm not mine. I'm a small scale contractor, even smaller than these individuals. But when you go to a homeowner and they're making decisions about what they can and can't afford, it's difficult. And when you look at what's, you know, this little small contractor doesn't have all the funds in his back pocket. He's responding. He's he's answering to financial backers. He's answering to banks. And he's in those banks have investors and they are not going to pencil out or approve a project that doesn't make sense on paper. And when interest, as was stated, when interest rates go up and costs of everything goes up, then it becomes more difficult to make these projects work. And sometimes then they go back and look for additional funding. And now that the state is putting more funding in there, of course, they're going to try to go after the additional funding to try to make the project work for the benefit of the city. And so this is just our way of saying it's going to help benefit the city. We like the project and we're here to say move forward and then go after what you can from the state. There's no guarantee that they're going to get the money from the state. But it's our way of saying, we like the project. Let's let it go. Go do your due diligence. Let's get this thing done. So I will be supporting it tonight.
Counselor Presnisky.
Thank you, Counsel President. Development's always it's it's the new hot potato, not the new hot potato. It is one of the biggest hot potatoes in the city and it's it's there's a lot of finger pointing to the City Council as as what direction the city is going to go and by what we allow and what we don't allow with development. I believe this project is exactly the way that we should be doing development. Everybody dotted their i's. They crossed their t's. They got the neighbors involved. Thank you very much. They took consideration from every board, planning board, this design and review board and you took your patience and your time to do this right. I'm going to miss Joe's auto laundry. I'll tell you, it was the greatest car cleanup place in the city, but this is something that's going to enhance that that's going to enhance the city. It's going to it's it's going to make the give the city more housing. It's going to make the neighborhood look better. And my hat's off for doing your your due diligence in in making it something that's presentable. And I hope that we, as a council, take this an example as what we're going to do in the future with all our other developments. So thank you very much.
Anything further from the counselors? On the committee's recommendation for adoption for the order to approve the certified project application for 38 Norman Street Q O Z B LLC. Is this a roll call roll call vote? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Watson felt.
Yes.
Counsel Varela.
Yes.
Counsel Proznuski.
Yes.
Counsel Marcelo.
Yes.
Counsel Merkel.
Yes.
Counsel McLean.
No.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Hepworth.
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez.
Yes.
Counsel Cohen.
Yes.
And Counsel Stott.
Yes.
Thank you. On the motion to approve a certified project application for 38 Norman Street Q O Z B LLC and to authorize a tie tax increment exemption agreement, 11 members voting, 10 in the affirmative, one in the negative, the matter carries. Further committee reports. Counsel Marcelo.
Thank you, President. City of Salem and City Council, October 12th, 2023, Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Illegal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Sections 1001, Composition, and Section 1002, Appointments of Trustees, Term Vacancies. And to discuss the composition and number of trustees appointed relative to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, has considered said matter and would recommend that the matter remain in committee.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? Any opposed? On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion.
Thank you, President. Again, we were all just here a little bit ago. So there were two things that were outstanding from our first meeting. And that was whether the City Council itself could appoint members of that board and the the term length. And so the city solicitor did some research and, in fact, all appointments must be made by the mayor. There was an outstanding question about whether we can specify that the mayor appoint one counselor possibly or get some council representation on that board as a check and balance. And the second the second one was, I think, we didn't have as as full a discussion on this one, but was to make each each member a two year term and to allow them to be reappointed. So those were the those will be the edits at some point, but so we still have this this one outstanding question about council membership on the board. So it is remaining in committee until I can get some further guidance on that.
Any further discussion? Counsel Watson felt.
Thank you, President Stott. A question on that report. Are we also going to further discuss the idea of different term overlapping or which came up at the end? Okay, I wasn't sure.
That will all be specified.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I think it's like that currently. Any further discussion? On adoption of the recommendation, the matter staying in committee. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter stays in committee. Communications from city officials.
With the following order that was submitted by the city solicitor, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, the City Council hereby declares that Erin Vandestat Vandestat has met the requirements for exemption as set forth in this section and may be retained as a summer playground supervisor and special event assistant by the Park and Rec and Community Service Department.
Counsel Presnisky.
Thank you. I move that this be adopted by roll of call vote.
Counsel Presnisky, does this be adopted by adopt by roll call vote? Under discussion.
The city solicitor obviously did her due diligence and found that there's no conflict of interest or any violations of conditions of the Erin Vandestat's employment. So I will that this be accepted.
Any further discussion? On the order that Erin Vandestat is approved for work, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Watson felt.
Yes.
Counsel Varela.
Yes.
Counsel Proznuski.
Yes.
Counsel Marcelo.
Yes.
Counsel Merkel.
Yes.
Counsel McLean.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Hepworth.
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez.
Yes.
Counsel Cohen.
Yes.
And Counsel Stott.
Yes.
Upon the question of Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, for Erin Vandestat to work as a summer playground supervisor and special event assistant by Park and Rec, 11 members voting, 11 in the affirmative, matter carries. Petitions.
We have petition from National Green and Verizon to install one jointly owned pole, number 1907-50 on Derby Street.
Hearing ordered October 26, 2023. Further petitions.
We have a petition from National Green and Verizon to relocate one jointly owned pole, number 561 on Boston Street.
Hearing ordered October 26, 2023. Further petitions.
We have requests from the residents of Chestnut Street to hold a block party on October 31st, 2023, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Counsel Watson felt.
Thank you, President Stott. I move that this be granted.
Counsel Watson felt moves that this be granted. Under discussion.
Thank you, President Stott. This is another thing that has happened for many, many years. This is the Chestnut Street neighborhood just closing down the streets so that trick or treaters can come on Halloween night just between the hours of five and eight, which are our trick or treating hours. For those who have never walked Chestnut Street on Halloween night, it's a lot of fun. It's a really safe place. A lot of families bring their kids there. So it's been really good and important, I think, to make sure that those those folks all stay safe. Thanks.
Any further discussion? On Counsel Watson felt's motion that the residents of Chestnut Street are granted to hold a block party on October 31st, 2023, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions.
With the following list of public guides and one vehicle for hire operated only.
Counsel Marcelo.
Thank you, President. I move that these be granted.
Counsel Marcelo moves that these be granted. Under discussion.
No discussion.
Any further discussion? On the motion that the public guides and vehicle for hire operator licenses are granted, all all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have one secondhand valuable license.
Counsel Marsillo?
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs.
Counsel Marsillo moves that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs. Under discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have five claims.
Counsel Marsillo?
Thank you, President. I move that these be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs.
Counsel Marsillo moves that these claims be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs. Under discussion?
No discussion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor that these are moved to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have one drain layer contractor operator license.
Counsel Marsillo?
I move that this be granted.
Counsel Marsillo moves that this be granted. Under discussion?
No discussion.
Doesn't matter. It's not a...
Doesn't matter. Okay. On any further discussion? On Counsel Marsillo's motion that the drain layer contractor license be granted, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have one sign bond.
Counsel Marsillo?
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. It's a constable, I'm, I'm sorry, it's a drain layer contract operator bond.
Counsel Marsillo?
Drain layer...
There's a sign. Six Progress.
It's a sign, but it's supposed to be a drain layer, right? Yeah.
Drain layer bond.
The one above it, yes.
Okay. I move that it be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs in return approved.
Counsel Marsillo moves that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs in return approved. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Unfinished business. Counsel Cohen?
Hold on. We have one second passage of an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 75, resident sticker parking.
Counsel Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott. I move this adopted for second passage.
Counsel Cohen moves for adoption for second passage. Under discussion?
And no discussion.
Any further discussion? On Counsel Cohen's motion for adoption for second passage of an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 75, on Broadway, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further unfinished business?
We have a second passage of an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 50B, handicap parking.
Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, President Stott. I move for adoption for second passage.
Counsel McCarthy moves for adoption for second passage. Under discussion?
No discussion.
On Counsel McCarthy's motion for second passage to amend an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 50B, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further unfinished business?
We have a second passage of an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section B, handicap parking for Essex Street.
Counsel Watsonfeld?
Thank you, President Stott. I move that this be adopted for second passage.
Counsel Watsonfeld moves for adoption for second passage. Under discussion?
No discussion.
On Counsel Watsonfeld's motion for second passage of an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 50B, handicap street on Essex Street, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further unfinished business?
We have a second passage of an ordinance relative to wage theft ordinance.
Counsel Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott. I move this as adopted for second passage.
Counsel Cohen moves for adoption for second. Final passage. Under discussion?
Yes, briefly. Two things, three things, actually. One, I'm sorry it took so long. Two, I've already met with counselors Bowen and Turco of Beverly and Peabody respectively regarding submission and are strengthening ordinances in their cities. And for example, the Peabody ordinance was based on Medford, which is really inadequate. And at tonight's meeting, Peabody will vote on an ordinance that includes many of the provisions that we voted, will be voting on today. The other thing is, I've already been working with our D E I director. As we talked about, it shouldn't just be a piece of paper, but it's really a lot about outreach. And we want to ensure that all feel safe reporting and that there's no unintended consequence. For example, I met with Julio Ruiz of Lynn's Worker Center. He's the person who brings the cases to court on behalf of the Labor Council and want to make sure that the impact, for example, doesn't adversely affect undocumented people. And our D E I director has committed to probably one community meeting a month if possible, where we'll educate employers about the rules and especially workers about what their rights are. And I just want to thank Counsel McLean for all the good teamwork and everyone in this council and all the other people in the city and the, you know, and so many people in the community for this. I think we should really be proud that we're going to have the strongest wage theft ordinance in Massachusetts. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Watsonfeld?
Thanks, President Stott. Just congratulations to Counsel Cohen and to Counsel McLean for all their hard work on this. As you know from past comments, I'm a big supporter of it. And it took a lot of work and it took a long time. So congrats, guys.
Any further discussion? On Counsel Cohen's motion for second passage of an ordinance relative to wage theft ordinance? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Congrats again. Tabled from last meeting? Counsel Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott. This was like a three-way error. So I just want to let people know that our intention is to have the chief update us on his trip to Ukraine where he brought the surplus equipment. It's now going to be on the 26th. And I want to talk to the clerk.
Do you want to keep the matter on the table?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I moved that it's tabled to the 26th.
All those in favor that the matter stays tabled? Any opposed? Matter is tabled. Any further? Counsel Dominguez?
Thank you, President Stott. Moment of personal privilege, I know that everyone, probably some might call him, I gotta say something about it, but I wanted to make sure that we express ourselves beside the communication that it was in conjunction with all of the elected official condemning what's going on in Israel. And I think that we should pray and may publicly know that we are in support of the greater country of Israel in this moment where, I mean, things should not happen the way it is. So we pray for peace and I mean, publicly condemn what's going on over there, whoever made possible to be, to have so many innocent people die. It is, it is embarrassment and we, we have to be together as a body, as a city, as a humans, and we in support of all of the people from Israel at this moment. And I would like to ask if it's possible to have maybe a one-minute silence in memory of those who died and their family? And so to show support if it's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, Counsel McLean? Counsel Cohen, do you want personal privileges? Okay, Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Council President. It is on the same topic. And I'm going to try to keep myself collected here. It's been a really difficult and heartbreaking week, I think, for many people in our community. And I take that very personally myself, as my spouse and children are Jewish, as are many of my friends, including those on this body. And there is a sense of terror and heartbreak that is widespread. And our body issued a statement condemning Hamas for their heinous actions, and it was well deserved. Because there is never any justification for the destruction of innocent life for political purposes, ever. At the same time, it is important to me to recognize the many years-long friends I have who are part of the Palestinian and Arab diasporas. I've had the good fortune of visiting Israel and the West Bank and Gaza in my life and of making many friends. And there is likewise a sense of heartbreak and terror, and yet also a sense of who speaks for me. It is an unfortunate truth that there are millions of people who have been living in Gaza for quite a long time without access to many of the things we take for granted, like water and power and access to regular clean food. More than 90% of the people who live there don't have access to clean water. More than 50% of their population is not at the age of adulthood. More than 40% of their population is under 15. It's disproportionately children living under terrorist rule and who are now facing a situation where access to even the slim services they have have been turned off and are being bombed indiscriminately. At current count, over 300,000 people are homeless in this area that is smaller than Rhode Island. And it is important, I think, in these moments to recognize that there is humanity there as well. And that all people deserve the right to safety and freedom and self-determination. And that is as true for the Palestinian people as anybody else. And so it is my sincere hope that we will see a de-escalation and an end to state-sponsored violence in the Middle East, that we will see a move away from zealotry and a recognition of our mutual humanity.
Counsel Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott, and really appreciate the comments, Counsel McLean. I'm going to read my statement because I really can't speak without doing that. Many people in Salem and beyond have complained to me personally because I haven't posted a statement about the, what's gone on in the Middle East. And I'm just going to say tough shit. I'm not going to post anything. The international, the intentional cruelty by Hamas is heinous as any ever. My sister has been in Israel for over 40 years, and my nieces and nephew and great nieces and nephews are there too. Fortunately, they're currently safe, but we've gone as much as 30 hours without contact. Just today, they all dispersed to be in separate places so they wouldn't all be in the same household. I have several friends there as well. Many people remember David and Adina Weiner from Adia's, and their three children just moved there a few months ago. Unfortunately, they're safe too. So many have family and friends there, and, you know, I'm sure everyone's worried and grieving, unfortunately. It's ironic that this is Hate Crime Awareness Month, as the atrocities, particularly the torture, rape and killing of children, the separation of families, the uncertainty of not knowing, you know, where loved ones are, all demonstrate the human capacity to hurt others without conscience. Nine years as Chair of Salem's No Place for Hate Committee, I started every meeting with, it's how we treat each other. I just want to, like an aside, everyone here knows Fuzzy Abusharik, and he and I, when he was on the committee, tabled together more than any other people in the committee. And we used to joke about how a Palestinian Muslim and a Jew could sit at the same table and work together. My sister and her family are part of Israel's Maritz party. For people who don't know, they're considered peaceniks. They support the Palestinian cause and the two-state solution, peaceful coexistence with Palestinians. All of these are things that I share as well. Palestinians are not all terrorists. Most of them are people who, you know, live and have the same desires as everyone else. And for people who don't know the context and the history, the only two people on earth, peoples on earth that are Semites are Palestinians and Middle Eastern Jews. I share these views, especially the ones that Counsel McLean said. Growing up, my mom always made sure that the most important holiday was Passover. And believe it or not, she found a way for us to do Palestinian Passovers on a regular basis and invited Palestinians that she knew to our table. And it's amazing. They were just like us. Consequences always affect the innocent. I hope the Palestinians who live in our community remain safe as well. I think back to when former Council Medor put up a resolution about how AAPI people in our community were being affected. And it was the first time that my wife had an opportunity to talk about how people verbally attacked her when she was at the post office. And so I'm extending my hand to all who have family and friends there and people who may be in danger here, because this is almost impossible to reconcile. But we really need to find a solution, and the solution is not fighting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, President Stott. I just want to say thank you for everyone's comments. Very well said. There's nothing else that needs to be said. But we, we all can have our private thoughts of what we want to really say, but in a public forum like this, we'll leave it to the words and especially, I want to recognize Counsel McLean, that was very heartfelt. I move for adjournment.
Counsel McCarthy moves for adjournment. All those in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.